To order and thank those of you who are in attendance. We appreciate residents and employees and administrators of the school district. We appreciate you being here. I, it is my responsibility only to do what I just did, which is call the meeting to order and ask you to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is the election of the meeting chairperson.
I nominate Kevin Hermoni to be the chairperson.
I'm going to nominate Peter Hanson.
Big vote. So, oh, we need a second.
I'll defer. No, you don't.
You need a second for this one, okay.
You need a second for nominations, yes.
Okay, so we have Peter Hanson.
I'm going to defer.
Right, I wrote this, yeah.
Everybody who lives in the district can either be the district, the meeting chairperson, or make nominations. Are there any other nominations?
What do you want to?
Are there any other nominations? Are there any not other nominations? Hearing none, I would ask that the unanimous ballot be cast for Peter Hanson to serve as the meeting chairperson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Wish I had the minutes from last year to see what to do.
Mr. Hanson.
Oh, give him the gavel.
I'm kidding. I don't.
The gavel's up there.
No. Okay, next agenda item is appointment of person to take minutes and a parli-arian, parliamentarian. Anybody want to make an additional nomination?
It's an appointment. It's an appointment.
Okay, I think.
You get all the power right now.
I'm hearing that, Shayna, you are being appointed to take minutes. She knew that, okay?
I just want to make one point of reference.
Please.
I'm so glad Peter wore his suit today.
Unlike me last week.
That's right. No, I'm just saying because of his big appointment.
Yeah.
Election. He got elected.
Oh, yeah, election, right?
Yes.
What's that? Yeah, and then I would ask for Kevin to be the parliamentarian. Appoint you, Kevin, to be.
Okay.
He might need the gavel.
Do we have, do we need to do one?
Nope, you're just appointing.
Like I said, I need the minutes from last year to remember it. Okay, report to the district residents, Mr. Dolby.
Yeah, I'd first like to thank everyone for attending tonight. It's my pleasure to serve as the district administrator for the Mozeney School District and deliver this report to the district residents. I'd also like to thank everyone in the room and the community for the warm reception that my family and I have received since we came to the district. I spent the past few months getting to know the district and the community, and I've been impressed with the support, the community displays for the district. I've also been very impressed with the educational opportunities and success our students have at their disposal. The opportunities are one of the reasons our family made the decision to come here. Looking at the past school year, there's a couple of highlights I'd really like to mention, and the first one I'd like to be able to officially tell you, but I can't officially tell you the number because it's embargoed yet. But I will tell you that our junior class far exceeded state average on the ACT test and actually scored the highest in school history on the ACT test this last year, so it's quite an accomplishment. So that's a major testament to the students, the staff, and the community.
Will you be providing them with free ice cream?
Uh, yes, Mr. McCarty, Mr. Vanhouw will have that.
They'll be taking care of it.
Perfect, perfectly lined up.
Can you get on the date so that we can talk?
More than ice cream.
I'm not sure if I've ever heard of a score this size, uh, this high, I'm sorry. Second accomplishment is the fact that we had three hundred and forty-nine students earn twenty-six, twenty-seven hundred dual credits through NTC, save families over three hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of tuition money. By opportunities and agreements, we have not just with NTC, but other colleges where our staff teach the courses and our students don't have to technically leave the school district for it, so that's quite an accomplishment. One of the changes we also made this year, which you heard about last month, is to create a district improvement plan. In the past, six schools had their own school improvement plan, but we've never created a district improvement plan. This year, we decided we look at providing an overarching theme to the district. The theme this year entails our desire to create a district communication plan that truly shows our performance as a district. Our focus this year will be to redefine ready based on our three foundational pillars of leadership, culture, and academics. We feel this will allow us to tell a more concrete and complete picture of our district performance. The current school report card has value, but has a narrow focus on what it looks at to arrive at a score. We'd like to develop something that looks more at the total picture of the school system and includes things like dual credits, youth apprenticeships, and also to showcase the complete student that we're trying to create. In the end, we feel this will have great value to our district and will show more accurately the job we're doing. Another focus this year is school safety. As a district, we've made changes in this area with the idea being to provide a more safe and secure learning environment for our students and staff. It is our intent to continue to work on this by providing continual training and drills for our students and staff in an effort to ensure we're ready in the unfortunate situation, for instance, that we have to put this practice into play. We'd like to thank our wonderful relationship we have with the Mozeney Police Department, Fire Department, EMTs, Chief Grahams, our wonderful SRO Eric Crowsey for their guidance, leadership, and help in this area. Those efforts are furthered by our Safety Ad Hoc Committee at the district level that focuses on continually working to make our district a safe environment. We also continue to put an emphasis on student mental health in various ways. Our goal is to find ways to support our students, build strong relationships with them, and provide outside services as necessary to ensure that our students are healthy in all areas of their life. Without a healthy, well-fed student, learning is a difficult thing to accomplish. And the last topic is, the biggest one, is the impending school referendum of nineteen point seven five million dollars that will be on the ballot on November fifth. This referendum was an outcome of not only the strategic planning process during the nineteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year, but also the recent survey conducted in the spring of twenty twenty-four. These two community outreach efforts were designed to guide the board to identify the priorities and tax tolerance level of the community when it comes to facilities improvements. The projects that were identified as part of the referendum were those that scored the highest on the most recent survey. It is our hope that the community will take the time to become informed on the referendum process by following our social media accounts, looking at the information on the school website, following along in the Mozeney Times, looking at flyers that are part of athletic programs, read the mail that's going to be coming out, attend the open house on October seventeenth, read the link that's going to be coming out soon, or take a pocket brochure on your way out and pass them around to your friends, and there'll be flyers that will be going out as well. We ask that the community takes the time to be informed on what the question asks and takes the time to vote. And the final topic is school finance. As you'll hear in a couple of minutes, our financial stability is in a good spot for the school year. New Finance Director Rod Huthner and myself have been working to familiarize ourselves with where the district is in regards to the budget. We also want to caution everyone that things can change between now and when the final budget is presented in October because we're still waiting for a handful of data points related to aid certification, property valuation, and our final enrollment count. Most pieces will fall into place in the coming weeks. One of the issues facing this district is declining enrollment, which results in lost revenue for the district as the costs continue to increase with inflationary pressure. The district could be faced with some difficult decisions in the coming years as to finding a way to merge these two conflicting situations. I've always felt that our job as a district is to provide the best education possible in the most cost-effective manner by being fiscally responsible. That mission has not changed for me and will be what guides us over the coming months and years. Overall, I'm proud of the great educational system we have in the district. This is a testament to the support from the community, the talented students in the district, the top-notch staff we have, and the very supportive school board. I wish to thank all those groups and the administration for their tireless effort on behalf of the students and the greater community of the Mozeney School District.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next agenda item, number six, is the presentation of the proposed budget. We have our Director of Finance here.
Go ahead and click on six, Kristy. All right, if you're in the big booklet, there's no page numbers, but when you get to the spreadsheet grid type, I'll just go through what the funds represent for those of you in the audience. So when you get their general fund, that's the main operating fund of the district. Anything that isn't in any of these other funds I'm going to talk about is in general fund. Debt service fund, that means any non-referendum and referendum debt activity is handled through those two funds. Special projects is mostly special activity in there at that total, but it also includes scholarships, donations, and student activity accounts. Capital projects funds. The thing here is you can transfer money in there. You don't have to spend it right away. You can leave it in there. Last year's activity of the four hundred and seventy-two thousand was finishing up the big cafeteria project. Food service fund is the next one. So Chartwell's is our management vendor, and this is their second year of service. And we just had a meeting with them. Seems like everything's going well. Community service. Activity in there is like the pool, school resource officers, middle school sports, community events, community center, weekend events would be in there. And community education. Then the next page, you'll see a recap of the estimated levy at this time, which is subject to change in October when we get our valuation, our state aid, enrollment, as was said. And the bottom is the required language we need to put in for the energy efficiency exemption we receive. They require us to put it on the annual meeting for everybody to see. And since we're in here, I'm going to jump ahead to the next bullet point, which is the treasurer's report, the next page. And this is recapping a lot of the numbers, but I guess it's the treasurer's report. So the current cash balances at June thirtieth was five point nine million. So we haven't had the short-term, I don't foresee having the short-term borrow. And also on the bottom of the page is required fund, seventy-three post-employment benefits that we need to put in the annual meeting. So that's information on that. But if you want to go back to page six, or Kristy, or point six, um, scroll down, we'll hit the revenue limit calculation. Tried to keep it brief and clear. And this is on the extra sheets I printed out, so if you didn't look at it online or whatever. So it starts with what was last year's base. The state budget is two-year budget, so we know it's going to be three hundred and twenty-five dollars we get extra this year. So that's how much we get per student in twenty-four, twenty-five, member, resident. So here's our three-year average, and that gets us this much. But let's just jump to the three-year average, Kristy. If you click on that, and this is on, and the page is behind. Just information historical on what our revenue limit membership has been. Now, that's not students in the seats, that's residents that. So if they open enroll out, but they're our resident, we're counting them. And for summer school, that's based on however many minutes they're creating at summer school. They come up with an FTE, then they take forty percent of that FTE, so I don't know, just making extra calculations. But this is, you know, the estimate, and we might have went over that. I forget, Jolene, because I did this a little while ago, but. And then if you slide up, or, so this is the three-year, so it's taking three years. So the last three years, and I was estimating this year, is nineteen twelve, but the year before was nineteen fifty. Was our three-year average. So if you go back to the revenue limit calculation, Kristy. And then this is just an estimate right now. As I'll show you, it isn't too big of a deal if it's off by a little bit because we get, we're ended here with our base, but then we get a declining enrollment exemption. So we get the amount of last year's three-year average, nineteen fifty. As a one-time, you get that money, gives you a year to get your staffing right-sized to the current enrollment.
So we can't do it again, one time?
No, so next year, if we're still declining, we'll go back to this year's three-year. Yeah, so we lose.
So if next year we're at nineteen hundred instead of nineteen twelve, we'd get twelve by eleven thousand, six, whatever.
So, yeah, so this amount is the nineteen fifty minus nineteen twelve, thirty-eight times how much we get per member. And then we got the energy efficiency exemption, you know, it's in the eight ninety to nine hundred thousand area. And then the vouchers for the private schools. So we levy for it, and we, they take it all of our money, so it's in and out. So here's our total revenue limit then. You know, that plus the exemptions we get there. So this is why I'm going through it is the revenue limit is more than eighty percent of the district's funding for any year, so it's a pretty big deal. So we got our total revenue limit, less how much we get in state aid, that's how much we're allowed to levy. And then this year, this is how general fund and the non-referendum debt levy make up that amount. And then we can levy for community service fund and the referendum debt outside of the revenue limit. And then if you want to go back to the lead page, Kristy, and click on the proposed tax levy, this has just got value, um, historical on our valuation, historical on our levy and mill rate, and at the very bottom, what our current estimate at this time is. And that's including the referendum levy, if the referendum passes. And then I just included a debt schedule of the current, where we're at debt-wise, is the last piece on the packet here. Any questions?
That's all I have.
Question back there.
Oh, sorry.
Nope. You are actually limited, the state limits you to what you can even levy in total?
Yes.
Well, you can, we can go to the voters and go for an operating referendum to exceed the revenue limit.
It's called, it's the, the, the state put in revenue limit authority back in the eighties.
Late eighties.
Where there is a certain amount per member you can levy, or you can ask for, it's called the revenue limit authority. So ours, and, and not to get too deep into the weeds, but the state froze it one year. So if you were a high-spending district, spending fourteen thousand dollars per kid, you always got to keep it at fourteen thousand, and then as the revenue limit went up, yours went up with it. If you were a low-spending district that.
If you were a low-spending district at like, say, eight thousand, then you had to stay there, so it's created a difference. But the state has, every once, has increased the revenue limit authority, and that's where you saw the eleven three twenty-five or eleven eleven thousand, because last year the state made the decision to increase the low revenue ceiling to eleven thousand. So a long way of answering this is yes, the state tells you how much you can levy per student. And then based on, and the way I simply try to simplify it is A plus B equals C. C is the total revenue limit you have, which is the eleven thousand three twenty-five times the nineteen twelve, roughly speaking math. And then A is the state aid, and then B is the tax levy. So if you take the total amount minus the aid, that then becomes a tax levy, which is the portion of school funding that the local taxpayers have to pick up.
So essentially, I mean, there's really not a lot of local control.
No. The only form of local control you really have in it is if you ask for a referendum to exceed the revenue limit, whether that be for a capital project or an operational project.
Yeah, I was aware of that concept in other, other levels of government. I just didn't realize it applied here.
Yep, yep, yep. It's been around for, yeah, no, it's been around for a while. Yep, we've been working on it.
Oh, okay. Any further questions?
No, that's good.
Anybody else? So Rod, you, you covered the annual Treasurers Report as well?
Yeah.
Okay, just want to make sure. There, anybody have any further questions on that? So we need an acceptance of the annual-
I'll make a motion to accept the annual Treasurers Report.
Second, I think you did a good job.
And just a reminder to everybody sitting out there, you are also allowed to make motions. Don't be shy. If, yeah. Okay. Any further discussion on that acceptance? None? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Authorization authorization of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five tax levy. Reminder, this is advisory only.
You want to push the button? Kristi, push the link. There you go. That'll give the language that it needs to be set in.
Ken, I'll, I will read it. So authorized tax levy advisory only for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Be it resolved that a school tax be assessed advisory only against all taxable property, thank you, Kristi, within the district in the sum of ten million one hundred ninety-eight dollars. That, one? Ten million one hundred ninety-eight thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars, which is necessary to operate and maintain the district's school system and to finance the recommended budget and debt service obligations. General fund, which is Fund Ten, the amount of seven million three hundred and nineteen thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars. Non-referendum debt service fund, Fund Thirty-Eight, the amount of one point one five million. Referendum debt service fund, Fund Thirty-Nine, the amount of one point zero seven nine million. And community service fund, Fund Eighty, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I would ask for an acceptance. Motion for authorization of the tax levy.
I'll second.
That was by Jessica and then Diane. Okay, any further discussion, questions? None? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number nine, authorization for the board to provide transportation for public and non-public schools. Kevin just chose me because he wanted to hear me read. Be it resolved that the school board of the school district of Mozzany, Marathon County, State of Wisconsin be authorized to provide transportation service at district expense to all pupils outside the Mozzany city established by said school board, section one twenty-one, twenty-five, four, two, three. Be it resolved that the school board of the school district of Mozzany, Marathon County, State of Wisconsin be authorized to provide transportation service at district expense to all resident pupils enrolled in a private school situated not more than five miles beyond the boundaries of the school district measured along the usually traveled routes. Ken, I need, asking for authorization.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Done? Okay. Did you get that? Okay, any further comments? Questions? None? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Authorization for the board to provide school lunches. Be resolved that the school board of the school district of Mozzany, Marathon County, State of Wisconsin is hereby directed to furnish school lunches to any and all students in this district at such places and times and such cost as shall be set by said school board. And the school board is hereby authorized to pay any deficiency which may result from said lunch program, and that's from section one twenty point ten sixteen of the state statutes. As for authorization?
I'll make the motion.
Diane?
I'll second.
Philandra? Any further discussion, questions? Done? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next. Item eleven, setting of salaries and expense reimbursement for school board members.
There you go, Peter. Nice long one for you now.
I owe you, Kevin. Be it resolved that school board members shall receive two hundred dollars per meeting attended to a maximum of fourteen board meetings, twelve monthly meetings plus two special meetings, plus an additional stipend of two hundred dollars when attending fourteen meetings. The board members will also receive two hundred dollars per expulsion meeting attended up to a maximum of four per year. They shall receive two hundred dollars per deum for attending outside conferences or meetings, subject to the limits identified in the next paragraph. The maximum compensation for a school board member not attending a national conference or serving on an interview committee shall be five thousand dollars per year. School board members who attend a national conference shall receive up to four additional per deum days as compensation. School board members who serve on an interview committee to hire an administrator shall receive additional compensation of two hundred dollars per day. Be it further resolved that board members be reimbursed for their actual and necessary expenses up to the limits defined by board policy when traveling outside the district to perform school board duties in accordance with state statutes. May I ask, is this what we have currently? Is this what was approved last year? So this is, this is policy?
No.
No, it's not.
No.
It's our current conversation.
This is open for discussion. This is open for changes? So I will open it to the floor.
I think motion, you prove it as is.
Okay.
I'll second that.
We have a first and second. Any further comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, other authorized business. Do we have anything?
I have nothing. No.
Standing agenda item. Yes?
How are we doing with students transferring in versus the ones transferring out of the district?
We had a look at that, and I have the numbers upstairs, but I will tell you, we are positive open enrollment in versus out.
Awesome. Is there, is there, pretty, isn't there?
Thirty, plus thirty?
That much?
I want to say, I think is what the number was. It's, there's a posted note sitting on my desk right now. I want to say we're over two hundred in and like one eighty out.
Where are they all coming from?
Typically, neighboring Everest, Wausau, Marathon, it's the neighboring school districts. A couple from Spash, I think, or Stevens Point. But I think we do fairly well in terms of enrollment. I think we have a couple from Wittenburg, Burnham Wood, but I think we do, Stratford, but I think our best is probably in that Crow and Wetter, Rothschild area when you start getting into D.C. Everest school district, and then moving out here towards Double K in that area, you get some of the Wausau school district, we get some there.
We had a meeting last year where a family came from Rochelle. Father was driving them from Rochelle.
Now, the effect financially, I know it takes time. You don't get the full shot right away, right?
You never get the full amount on an open enrolled in. The school district that they reside in counts the student as their own, and then there's a transfer to you, and the transfer for open enrollment, Rod, is-
Nine thousand-ish?
Yeah, yeah.
Initially, we were showing a positive, right?
Yeah, yeah, so we would be, if we're plus thirty kids, we would be about a plus, you know, twenty-two, twenty-three, yeah. About thirty times nine thousand, so yeah. Quarter, yeah, two hundred and twenty-five, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the good on that, roughly speaking.
I know for sure some of the transfers in are still residual younger students
Yep.
of older students who came here during COVID from Wausau. I'm positive.
Yeah.
Because I hear from those parents like at least once every six weeks. They love our school district.
Yeah.
So they kept their other kids here even after Wausau opened up.
And where I, where I used to see a lot of open enrollment, I can't speak necessarily to here, but I can't believe this is any different, is you get a lot where I live on this side of the line, my family decides to buy a house on the other side of the line, so I open enroll to stay in this district. So you get some of that as well on both sides of that equation, in and outs. You know, I typically like to look at anybody we might lose after they've been in our system before. You know, like sometimes if you lose open enrollment out, like a four K kid, it's because parents work in Wausau and they want to take their kids with them and they've never really been in your system, but if you're losing kids after they've been in your system for a few years, then we have to look at some of the reasons that might be happening. So those are conversations we'll be having once those numbers get finalized. Still in the process of finalizing those numbers as we speak.
Now, with our president declining enrollment,
Yep.
how is that affecting us going forward, do you think, in terms of financial strength or weakness or whatever?
Well, I mean, obviously, since so much of your enrollment is tied to your FTE count, your student count, obviously, we're going to lose some budget revenue. So we're either going to have, we're going to have to make some decisions as a district about how to, how to best meet those needs. From a standpoint of looking at our budget, are there areas we can possibly trim the budget a little bit more to meet those needs to come with a balanced budget? So those are going to be conversations we're having. In fact, before I came down here, I had a conversation with the finance manager, Rod, about it's time to start getting ready for next year's budget as we speak, to start looking at where that might be once you get those FTE counts in. So, you know, it, like I said in my section, as inflationary pressures are causing costs to go up, we're seeing a declining enrollment, which is causing revenue to go down, so somewhere you have to merge those two things, and that's what we're going to be working on going forward. Is how to merge the declining enrollment with increased budgetary needs. And we're also too going into a new state biennial budget process. So you don't know if the state's going to give you new revenue.
Do you think they'll change?
Uh, no, I think the only change you're going to get is possibly an increase in special ed funding. And you have to understand though, an increase in special ed funding still helps your budget because you make a substantial transfer from your regular Fund Ten account, your general fund, to your special ed account to make that special ed account zero at the end of the year. That account has to be zero. So you're talking of making, you know, a million-dollar-plus transfer. So anytime they increase the aid on special ed, because one of the things you think about is right now, roughly speaking, right now you get aided about thirty-three cents on the dollar for special ed. So for every kid that's special ed, the state is giving us back thirty-three cents of every dollar we spend. So for people to say that we're increasing special ed identifications because it's a cost saver to us is really not, it's a moot point. No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't increase my cost by a dollar to make thirty-three cents back. That just doesn't make real rational budgetary sense. But there's a chance that that is going to go up. I don't think they're going to do anything with the revenue limit beyond the three twenty-five. I think there's conversations if that's going to stay or go. And I'm not going to get down that political rabbit hole, one way or the other. The governor used his line item veto to put it in for like four hundred years. You know, we'll see if that gets reversed or not, and you know, I'm not playing, I'm not getting in that rabbit hole. I'm just going to sit here and tell you that's what, the current law is three hundred and twenty-five dollars per pupil.
I do also want to add to that too, though, to point out the fact that all schools, almost all in Wisconsin, have declining enrollment. So it's not just our district. And it's basically because there's a population decline. COVID on forward, people can't afford, and the younger generation is not having kids like us older ones are. So just keep that in mind too. So we're actually doing well in the fact that we're thirty-plus. And hopefully we can keep attracting more, but it's not that we're doing bad. It's just declining enrollment is statewide.
Passing that referendum will help attract.
Absolutely.
I see you're doing pretty good on your fund balance here, right?
Yep, yep, yep.
Twenty, twenty-five?
Twenty-six, almost twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven percent, yep. And I think the other thing too, just going to build off that point too, is the, you know, people are going to go where housing is too, and the housing market is tough in this community. As a guy who was looking for a house not too long ago, you know, there, there aren't a ton of them for sale, and there's not a lot of land available to build on, so that, that's a player in this as well with people.
The board did decide in August, though, to not have an operating referendum.
Yeah.
Which would have, prospectively, if it had passed, if one would pass, it would alleviate for some period of time the financial crunch due to declining enrollment. The board decided after a lot of great deliberation, very good presentations, Steve Kaiser and the others, to go with the construction referendum in November. So whether the board decides to do something operating down the road, we'll see.
Well, I'd like to just add, I wanted to bring it up, and then you just talked about that work to Greg and Rod for the work that you've been doing on on our budget as you've come in. You hit the ground running big time. Thank you. Any other authorized business, what's that?
Poor Rod is-
I know.
Did you remove the cot from your office yet?
No, I got to put it back in. I'm just glad you found time to get some purple.
There we go.
I'll buy purple, more purple.
Any other business from anybody in attendance? Now, we'll set the date and time for the twenty twenty-five annual meeting.
I'll make a motion to set it for September twenty-third of twenty twenty-five at six PM.
Yeah.
But it's the fourth, I know, it's the fourth Tuesday of-
Well, you can set it for anything. So I mean, I-
He's making a motion.
Oh, you're moving it to the regular board meeting?
I typed that out as an option.
I missed it.
I'm not going to be-
Oh, yeah, that's a good idea.
It is a good idea.
I hear that it is a really good idea.
You just have to annual meeting.
Do we?
Yeah, the annual meeting at six, or meeting at-
Well, I'm okay making this as the motion. I'm okay making that as the motion, but my question as a follow-up would be in the budget presentation tonight, we had the final count numbers. We didn't?
No, we're still finalizing that.
That's just an estimate.
An estimate.
Yep, yep. If you want the final numbers, you're going to have to push it back probably closer to the first, well, if you really want accurate numbers, you're pushing it all the way back to mid-October at the earliest.
Listen, I'm, I mean, I won't be here for this because I'm not running for reelection, but I'm all for having fewer nights. Right?
And it saves money.
Yeah, I just said it saves money.
Yes, of course.
This is just an option you guys can do. As I told you, I will show up whenever you tell me to.
Greg, Greg can't make a motion on this, so.
I'll change my motion and make it to-
Okay, you make a friendly amendment to your own status yourself.
Because it wasn't second.
Anybody else want to second that?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on it?
That's true.
None? All in favor? Say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Need a motion to adjourn?
Need a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
I'm going to be like Mike Kaiser and come just next year to watch the meeting.
There you go. I'm telling you.
Okay. I'll hold favor to adjourn.